It is six o'clock. I would call you August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, meeting with County Board Supervisors. Tonight, we have Elder Roger Dalton from the Crawford's Church of Christ to provide the invitation. If you would please stand in your main standing position. Let's pray. Dear Holy Reverend God, we thank you for another day of life that you blessed us. Come before you just now thanking you that we had the privilege to be able to come before you with requests, petitions, or wants. God, as this group of board members come together, may they ask for your guidance and your wisdom as we begin this meeting. Bless them to engage in meaningful discussions. May they be unified as a group that could you first. Dear God, I pray that you will give every individual the strength that they need, that they grow and understand their roles. As Jesus said, "I have come to serve, not to be served." So as the evening begins, may our thoughts, words we speak, the actions we have be pleasing to you. Lord, by your son, in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
A pledge made to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds, justice for all.
All right, good morning. Good morning, board members. Mr. Smith and the first time former agenda of this school resolution. Don't move. So for record, I'll read the resolution in a minute.
We can hear you.
Yeah, can you? That's about the best I can do. And I feel like I'm yelling. I'm not going to be able to. All right, Witten County Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash thirty-four. Resolution honoring Trey Ward of Gruetry High School Outdoor Track and Field Team. Whereas the Gruetry High School Indoor Track and Field Team completed a very successful Twenty Twenty-five season. And whereas Trey Ward, a junior on the Gruetry High School Outdoor Track and Field Team, advanced to compete in Virginia High School League's Class One State Championship on June seventh, twenty twenty-five, at Liberty University in Lynchburg, Virginia. And whereas Trey defeated all other competitors, claimed the state champion in the one hundred meter dash with a time of ten point nine five seconds. And whereas the Witten County Board Supervisors officially commends Trey for his outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the Witten County Board Supervisors extends its heartfelt congratulations to Trey Ward in recognition of his Twenty Twenty-five Outdoor Track and Field State Championship title in the one hundred meter dash, and commends him for this outstanding achievement. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the Witten County Board Supervisors adopted this twenty-sixth date of August twenty twenty-five, signed right in the chair. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve Twenty Twenty-five dash thirty-four. And a motion by Mr. Terry is seconded by Mr. Morgan. Any questions for a conversation on that? Here none of the followers in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Congratulations to Mr. Morgan. He is a senior this year, so hopefully he'll be back next year. Now, next item on our agenda is a public hearing to discuss the Bertha Farms Transportation District. Mr. Terry, I'll let you bring it down.
Public hearing known as Bertha Farms Transportation Service District. The Witten County Board Supervisors will hold a public hearing Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P.M. and soon thereafter at Franklin and Board Supervisors Meeting Room Three-Four in South Sixth Street, Woodville, Virginia. The public hearing is open to comment on ordinance establishing the Bertha Farms Transportation Service District in the lead lines district. The service district will provide for street improvements to serve the landowners pursuant to Section fifteen point two dash twenty-four hundred of the code of Virginia. A copy of those ordinance and district is available in county administrative office for review or online at www.wittenco.org. The public may comment in person in public hearings, submit prior responses to county clerk Martha Collins at the address of the email at ngcolins@wittenco.org by order of the Witten County Board Supervisors.
All right, so we'll open the public hearing portion of this. Mr. Cook, keep the time. Each individual has five minutes to speak. And I apologize in advance about what you're saying. Brian.
That's close enough. Thank you, Your Honor.
Well, I was hoping that I wouldn't miss that personally. They have something in common, but you know, you never know.
Yes, I got you. Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Brian Thunderbird, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the residents of Bertha Farms to present our petition to create the Bertha Farms Road Transportation District. Before I do, I want to take a moment to thank the county and your county magistrate, Stephen Behr, for hosting last summer's community meeting to help our community understand the process. I especially want to thank county planner Lisa Shelton for her guidance throughout this process. Their help has been invaluable in explaining the requirements, helping us to understand what's needed to organize our neighbors, and ensuring this petition meets every standard. I also want to thank the members of our steering group, Pat Eller, Josh McFarland, and Peace Bonn, along with many other residents who also helped during critical junctures. Under the county's rules, a majority of the property owners have signed this petition. Even more strikingly, approximately seventy percent of those that live in Bertha Farms has also signed. They know firsthand the daily challenge of these roads and the urgent need for this district. Our request is simple. We need safe, reliable access to our homes, to our properties. Today, our narrow roads resemble those found in thermal countries. To be blunt, they are disrepaired, filled with potholes, uneven surfaces, and hazards that make commuting difficult and dangerous. Many of the residents I have talked to have mentioned vehicle damage to tires, alignments, or even worse, that they have attributed to the road. This is even true from some of those who did not sign the petition. More than inconvenience, this has created real risks. Delivery trucks, including the U.S. Postal Service, have at times refused service. A manufactured home recently flipped over on Bertha Farms Road, blocking the only access for several days. And most concerning, emergency responders have faced delays in responding. One neighbor who suffered a stroke was forced to wait nine extra minutes for an ambulance. And as you know with a stroke, minutes matter. This petition is about more than smoother roads. It is about safety, health, and quality of life. Establishing this service district is a start to ensure that Bertha Farms has the infrastructure and maintenance needed to protect its residents and allow our community to thrive. Tonight, I respectfully ask the board to approve the creation of the Bertha Farms Road Transportation Service District. With your support, Bertha Farms can move forward with safe, dependable roads for all who live and travel there. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, sir. The next person we have signed up is Vance Mayberry.
Good evening, board supervisors. I'm glad y'all actually took time to hear comments from the other part of the community here in Bertha Farms. And I want to get back to Mr. Thunderbird's comments here that seventy percent of the residents there have signed this, but in fact, he has changed his maps a total of four different times. And one time he changed it, my uncle Everett Mayberry lay dying in the ICU, and he still chose to put his personal agenda over what was right on this world and legal documents. And I want to say that this is going to be catastrophic for the people on the main road. You're looking at people with home fixed incomes, and you're raising them eight hundred dollars on the sum. Now, of the people on the road that voted yes, approximately thirty percent of them have their own business, which I will keep in mind, it's also illegal to run a business off Bertha Farms due to the contract of the original eighty lots which were in there. Now, if I go into work and tell them that my neighbors have offered or volunteered to sue me, I guess, and I ask my boss for raids, he's going to laugh at me. If you're looking at renters, places of business, they're going to pass it off to the customers. They will come up with taxes, no problem. You take the average working man, or someone who's worked somewhere for thirty years and living on social security, they cannot financially afford that. I've also documented Healy Haven, which is not currently attached to Mr. Thunderbird's update of his map. It was updated on the second map. He has recently removed Brian Davis, which I have personally seen his tractor and shredder come into his place probably four to five times a week. And he's touched his Route six oh eight, touches the main park, template lane, and borders Healy Haven Road on both sides. Not only that, keeping up with your main road, you're going through side roads. So the individuals on the side roads will have to keep up that as well. You're looking at doubling the taxes on that. That also has been brought to my attention that he has plans to pave Timber Road as well. So that will be another ten lots to which he will raise taxes on those individuals. If you go by the original eighty lots, none of the riverland borders that, the sixteen acres, and there's two acres in each lot. Also, Jay Johnson attempted to put down probably six ton of asphalt, which his equipment failed. He chose to leave in the road. If this moves forward, we will also move forward with a lawsuit against Jay Johnson to help pay for the tearing up of that asphalt. And up that, like I said, Mr. Thunderbird here changes the map three times, adding people, taking them out, adding them back in. I want to ask, is he on your planning commission's payroll? Because what gives this man the power over y'all? So I want to ask you all to very seriously think about what you're doing. I've lived in Bertha Farms my whole life, and it was a good community till he showed up. Now you can dispel the tension in your neighbors. I've took many of them hunting. I get along with all of them. But now you can dispel the tension. There's arguments in the middle of the road and everything. I want you all to take a good look inside your souls and do what's morally right for the people and your constituents. And I'll remind you all that it is an election year. The people that put you there could very well just move you out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person we have signed up is Everett Mayberry.
I appreciate it. If these people want to run the thing, that's fine. But leave my land taxes and my money alone. They don't hope to get good and they pursue. The road does not bother me. I just take my time. Take a while. I don't have to run that road a one hundred and six oh eight road. As far as if it's true on Mr. Thunderbird wants to do Timber Road, there's another hill back on top of that. It's the same thing as he is on Bertha Farms Road, that hill and asphalt. So we're going to stop Bertha Farms at that asphalt hill. And then he stopped Timber Road on that hill too right there. That road is what we're trying to do. And things, but not only this, they need to leave their taxes along too. That's the way I look at it.
All right, thank you, sir. Next person we have signed up is Penny Allison.
Good evening. Um, me and my husband have bought our property there almost twenty-five years ago. It's absolutely beautiful. We have property. And we chose not to make it our permanent home because of the road. The road is, in the last few years, has been worse than I can remember in the whole twenty-five years. And I can't even take my brand there most of the time because it drags anymore. And everyone in there deserves a decent road. I may we have an argument on how it's going to get there, but everyone deserves a decent road because once you get to back, when you get to the back, and when you get back there, it's like one lane. It gets blocked off or just blocked off. And that's dangerous, and it's an absolutely huge contingency. I don't know a lot of drill there because we didn't know until we called about. We go up and camp out, spend weekends there, and take care of the property and stuff. But that road is atrocious, and it needs to be fixed. And I hope that it just gets fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next person we have signed up is Sonya Ford.
Hello, I'm Carmen Dejarotol. Signed the order. Is not feeling well. She gave me her paper to read. She lives over at the Farms Road. She owns five parcels totaling twenty-three acres. With this proposal, she'll be paying one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars a year. That's over a hundred dollars a month. And, oh, I don't know many people that have an extra hundred dollars a month, especially with the way prices are now. She has one house with two people living there and two vehicles. They don't travel the road any more than anyone else, yet she'll be paying a considerable amount more than almost all of them to drive the same road. Only one person who signed the petition is paying more than her. Her land does not order any of the new improvements, leaving her with another half mile of road to upkeep herself. Originally, they were presented with two petitions with two different payment options. To my knowledge, neither one had enough signatures until parcel sixty-two dash eight, consisting of forty-eight acres, was removed. She was told this parcel was removed due to input from the citizens. This input was not from every citizen, but from the ones who were pushing for this proposal to pass. Although she's expressed her concerns to two steering committee members that option one was not my budget, my input, her input, did not change anything. Fifty-one percent of the landowners signed the petition, with forty-nine percent not signing. This is a very close situation. If parcel sixty-two eight had not been removed, this petition would not have received enough signatures. I'm concerned about how well thought out this project is, considering the errors that she has already identified and brought to the attention of the planning commission. With that being said, and the numbers being so close, I feel that this should not pass. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next person we have is Kristen Farren. Did I get that phone?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm here today on behalf of Bertha Farms community to respectfully request that the state approve their quest on paving and maintaining upgrades to our neighborhood road. This roadway has fallen into serious disrepair. Potholes and buried that uneven surfaces. Not only create a daily inconvenience, but also leads to costly vehicle damages and unnecessary repairs and expenses for residents to rely on the road daily. In addition, proper surfacing would greatly reduce just help preserve the property's value, creating more attractive environment. It is important to note that property owners of Bertha Farms have already spent significant amount of money out of pocket attempting to maintain the roads themselves. Despite these efforts, the conditions have only worsened over time, underscoring the needs for long-term state-supported improvements. Beyond these several particular concerns, and safer and smoother roadways enhance all over travel experiences, fosters community pride, and enjoys growth and investment in the area. These upgrades are not simply about infrastructure there and investment in the quality of everyone who lives, works, and travels these roads daily. Lastly, I respectfully urge this body to take action and move forward with the necessary upgrades. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next person we have signed up is John Thompson.
Good evening. My family's owns some property back here on Bertha Farms, and I'm I'm opposed to the additional taxes that would be added several different reasons. One, even in the ordinance that they're proposing, they're saying part of it is to provide additional services. The only thing they're going to provide is a road for a half a mile. And there's more than a half mile road in there. So, you know, they're providing this. Some of the guys that is going to, you know, help first responders get in quicker. I was a first responder for thirty-three years. That road would not prevent going in there the way it is now. So is it worth? You know, the blow somebody would pay is a hundred and sixty-five dollars a year for seven years. And then the next one would be three hundred and six, and then the other one would be eight hundred and sixty-three dollars a year. If somebody retired on a fixed income, they're already paying property taxes. So now they're going to be paying additional property tax for a half mile road to get services that they say they're being, that are not equal to what somebody in rural retreat would be getting. So after this, the next thing is somebody from rural retreat will say, our subdivision's got a bad road. Try to do the same thing. You know, I read in the code, it says, you know, fifty percent more than fifty percent of the property owners have to vote yes, and they have to own more than fifty percent of the land there. But the way it's been, you know, been decided so many times, they include people in one time, they take them out the next. They include property that was not originally in the Bertha Farms subdivision. So who's making this decision? Nobody can give us an answer. But, you know, respectfully, I'd ask you to not approve this ordinance. Because it's just going to raise taxes, and nobody wants, you know, to pay more taxes during this period that we're in right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next person we have signed up is Patricia Eller.
Good evening. I've lived on Bertha Farms for twenty-five years. My husband has been there since nineteen eighty now. This road is horrible. You hit a bump, you're going to tire your car if you hit it too hard. I sometimes I have to come to complete the stop before I can go out of home. I go in and out of that road twice to the morning and at least twice in the afternoon because I have to ride from six oh eight to the bus stop, which is another concern. That is a mud hole down there. When it rains, it all runs down where exactly where the kids have to get on the bus. Our kids should not have to travel and walk through all that just to get on the bus. It's just a mess. When Mr. Roberts was on the board, I called him. He came out there one day and looked at it. It was just, I mean, he's got big ruts in it, and the kids walk through the mud. It's just bad. And they're saying, you know, if people's on fixed income, my husband and I both are on fixed income. But we strongly support the passage of this ordinance to get this road fixed. And I would like to thank Brian for all the work and hard work she has put into this. I urge you all to go ahead and pass this ordinance so we can get our road fixed. We can have a nice place in there. Instead of, they laid the asphalt down in front of my house. It was horrible, and they tore it up. To make it better, well, then people started driving over on my property to get uphill so they could go on out. Even people going to the river. So please consider and pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next person is Dreamon Johnson.
Hello, everyone. Many of y'all may not know me. I live on Bertha Farms. Go on also with the Ridge and Clubs. Ridge and Club. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today regarding the pressing matter of Bertha Farms Road. I myself have, well, I can't buy one tire. I gotta buy four because when my car gets damaged, it's going to cost me. And I get too many potholes for it not to cost me. I have had to replace a mud dam because it busted on the road. We have had so much trouble with the vehicles coming in and out, speeding, damaging everything, tiring everything up, making the potholes even worse. So therefore, what else can we do? We need the roads fixed. The troubled situation, unsafe conditions, the travel on the roads, and emergency reslanders can't get in and out. And then, of course, the vehicles that are getting stuck are having to go into the ditch, which I've been in that ditch quite a few times, and I don't like it. Additionally, our mail carriers have expressed a frustration and may come to D.C.'s deliveries altogether. What we're going to do then, we have nowhere else to go except for post office. In one instance, our delivery overturned one of the residents' homes because we got blocked in. I got blocked in. The pupils, we had to go and walk over the hill. I don't like walking out. I don't like the dust. I have asthma. I can't breathe. So we need to fix it. It's not, it's unsafe for everybody out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person we have signed up is Harry Hope.
Hello. How are y'all doing today?
Good.
Good. I only have the closest to the road than anybody up in there. My house is maybe fifty feet from the road. I've been in there for over ten years. I moved there to get away from stuff like this. I don't want to pay. People fly through there as it is. They complain about tearing up their vehicles. Well, if they weren't going thirty miles an hour, they wouldn't be tearing up their vehicles. I drive it every day, and I haven't tore up anything in mine. So all I wanted to say is I'm against it. I don't want it, and I hope y'all vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next person looks like Brenda Anderson. Is that right?
Andrews.
Andrews.
Yes. Okay, I've lived in Bertha Farms for thirty years now. And like Harry says, we bought that place because of the way it was. You know, it was on the back road. You didn't have to deal with all these people. And as far as having my car fixed, I've never had to have shocks or anything put on in the thirty years I've lived there because I have enough sense to slow down when I need to. And I'm also on a fixed income. Me and my husband get twenty-five hundred dollars. Plus, you know, we've saved some money. But I don't see me spending all my money to have that road fixed when we could haul some gravel in there and work on some of those holes that these people are so worried about. And Mrs. Barham or Peter's wife, she talks about the road. She doesn't even live there. She lives over on Stillwell Road in Drake, so I don't know what it is to her. You know, I mean, if they just go down to the river and stuff occasionally, why does the dust and all this other stuff bother them? And, uh, and like the other people, why did we have three different maps? Why did the maps keep changing as to who could vote, who couldn't? Okay, they know I was a no, okay, and several other people voted no. But nobody ever came to my home or called me or asked me what I thought about it. Nobody ever asked my opinion. And as one of the people that's lived there the longest, you would think that they would want to know. And I live on Timber Road, and recently we took up some money from a landowner in there, and we put down some stuff on the road. Road is fine right now. I wish some of the other people that lived on Timber would have came, came out. But, uh, in my thirty years that I've worked there, I've been up here before about the roads. But, uh, but I've also went house to house and took up money. the roads, but, but I've also went house to house and took up money and, and hired a dump truck driver to bring in gravel to fill in these holes. And I, I came for more taxes, okay? Because your social security is only so much. I don't know if any of y'all are retired, but that check's only so much, and then you gotta buy extra insurance to take care of what Medicaid don't, or Medicare, excuse me, don't? And these people on a hardtop driveway, well, there's plenty of paving companies out here that'll do it. And another thing, who's gonna pay for that twenty thousand dollar fee to change the Appalachian halls? And then I was reading in there somewhere, it was like, the residents will come up with five thousand dollars for an administrator, I guess be over it. We've done fine without all this for thirty years. Why do we need it now? Thank you very much.
All right, the next person we have signed up is Neil Buffett.
Don't nobody throw rocks at me. I love everybody here. You know, first thing I wanna say is, I know the way the world is, and I ain't liking it. I'm gonna tell you something. Everybody out here hard workers, they work, been living there a long time, think you've been living there a long time, got a lot of money, got a lot of money. None of this be getting talked about, amen, if America, which is everybody in here, they got a lot of money out there. How come y'all pitting all of us against us? We out here fighting and scratching. I'm telling you, Wick County got a boatload of money, and it's coming out of our pocket, whether we skin here or we leaving out of here. It comes out of our pocket. Hey, a lot of money in Wick County. Wick County got people picking, hauling their own trash to the dumps because they don't wanna hire a truck to go around and pick up everybody's trash, you know? It's too much money. Hey, I lived on that road. I live at the very end of that road. That man right there, he just went down on the river, you know? It is a terrible road. When I first moved there, I've seen that road before there was houses on that road. You couldn't drive a tank through that road. Heck, ruts in, okay? Wasn't no homes out there. Hell, there're limeless homes out there now, a lot of people out there now, you know? I couldn't even get my home because of that road. A bank would not sell a house one. None of them homes are gonna sell if that road looks like that, okay? They won't sell. A bank ain't gonna give you money if you can't get to that house. They told me that. And I know I got five minutes on that. I'm a big talker, I can sit up here all day. Let me tell you, one person, one person signed that agreement. Yeah, he's a millionaire. I ain't been to it, that's good stuff. You know, I'm careless, but he's a good guy. He, he signed that paper, and I was able to buy my, my dream home, you know? And for me and my kids, I'm, I'm, I only work by myself. I do this on my own by myself. I don't have a bunch of, nobody else helping me. I'm willing to pay, I, I'll put the number out there, I'm gonna go up a hundred dollars. I don't know if that much or that less. I might go one twenty-five, you know, I count the pennies. But look, millionaire or not, that's a boatload of money y'all trying to charge him over there. That is way too much. They don't drive but about four miles to get to wherever, some of them don't even drive to it, don't even take very, you know? I drive the whole thing. I want the road paved, I do. But I ain't trying to cut y'all's arm off to get it. I don't even try, you know? And as far as taking people on the map off the map, well, if they own the map, they pay. If they ain't on the map, they don't pay. Now, that's my understanding, they lost up in this contract. I don't understand, I haven't read all of it, you know what I'm saying? But I'm gonna tell you something, you can't blame the attorney. Say, if it come in, it don't come in, I won't pay nothing. You know, y'all have a bunch of hoes out there, nobody living in it, you can get no money. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I move on. I've had worse stuff happen to me than pay for it. I've had worse stuff happen to me than have a home, not have a home. I got a nice home. You know what I'm saying? A lot of people like that. Well, they can have it. If I can't buy it, I just move out, but I won't be in Wick County. You know, Wick County got a lot of money. I think you might need to relook at this contract if, from what I'm hearing, that it's way too much money for one person to be buying just because you ain't much length. I ain't paid but a half, quarter of the road, whatever. I think the whole thing ought to be paid, and your taxing factor is paid, you know? Taxes for what the land's worth, what paved road next to the land's worth, on the road, mountain road, you know? So I'm a mayor about it, to be honest with you. You know, I drive a tank, I got a beat-up truck, ain't no car I got over two, year two thousand. You know why? Because the road. You know, my parents, my family won't come to see me, you know why? Because the road. Nobody, that road was famous. Before it even got paid, it was famous for being the worst road out of all the dirt roads in Wick County, which is a lot of roads in Wick County that ain't paid for whatever reason. They're not paid, it's a lot of roads. That was the worst one. I could go one inch county, next inch county. They ain't know exactly where I live. You can live out that road? Oh, my God. How can you go out and out that road? That's the first thing they talk about, some damn road. I don't see an acre's law carried by the river. They don't talk about that, they don't talk about that. You, you live out that road? Can't believe, you know? I mean, you couldn't get out that road. And yeah, I've seen wrecks on that road, a single-lane road, pothole, you gotta get over the rock. Can't, there ain't no road there, man. And you can't pass it, you can't go by each other. You have to pull off in somebody's driveway up into the woods. You know, that's nonsense. I drive the whole thing every day. Amen.
Oh, thank you, sir. All right, that's all the public care and citizens we've forced over. So I'll close that. I'll open the floor for ring discussion on ordinance, district. It's starting about to put you on hot spot with your district. Now, we'll do what you're here.
So I've been working on this for four years. I do, I'm not opposed to them paying the road. I understand how transportation districts are set up, that the residents drive the transportation district, that the state does a portion of the money, and the county comes up with the other, and then gets that money from, from the residents raising taxes. My, the concern I have is that in the pink area of the high street, there's a sixteen parcel, only seven sign. The green section has thirty dog people, people sign. Blue section is thirty-seven, section is ten people. I know there are people in the pink that own fixed income that can't afford the eight hundred and sixty extra dog. One other people in the green that's on fixed income that can't afford. I know there are people who are the same deal. This is a working-class area, it is not next to a golf course. So there are multiple parcels that has rightways going to other areas instead of on Bertha Farms Road. There are people that own multiple parcels that would be paying in excess of a thousand dollars plus, that their parcel don't have houses on it and things like that. Of the total, everything, eighty-eight parcels is affected. The cost is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. And if you did that evenly, the cost would be two hundred and seventy-six dollars a year per parcel, which would weigh different than eight sixty-three, three oh six, or one sixty-five, if my math was correct. I'm not opposed. My concern is that this, as it stands, is not very neighborly to the neighborhood. And if it could be more neighborly and more kinder to everybody involved, I think it would go further, make sure that people don't have hurt feelings and continue to have a strike in that community.
All right, does anybody else have anything? What is it as far as the percentage, now, what, seventy percent? What's fifty-one percent, forty-nine percent? What is, what exactly is signed and not signed? And how many documents have changed and what's changed?
The petition that came into us had the fifty-one percent of the landowners that signed it. Mr. Barrett made me talk about the homeowners in there and people that live there, maybe the seventy percent you were talking about, but it's fifty-one percent of the landowners have signed this petition. It's, it's, and have signed the petition supporting this as presented.
But they never asked anybody better than I.
We're not gonna do that, okay? So where I'm at, and this is kind of a shocker because for eight years, I've sat up here every time we looked at the ordinance, the overwhelming majority have showed up and said, yes. Now, tonight, you know, it's about fifty-fifty, and, you know, I, I've got a side on the people that are on fixed income that, that don't wanna pay higher taxes. And that's where I'm at. Now, if I lived there and I could afford it, because I've been on that road multiple times, twenty-plus years, I would absolutely side on it. But, you know, I'm, I'm not on social security, so, so I get that. You know, everybody that moved there realized, you know, they were moving on, a dirt road, a private road, whatever. So to be personally going forward, you know, if, if things change, or like you said, they think it's great out there, even, then I'd be all for it, but, you know, that's where I'm at. So I want to take a motion to, or I'll before that, for a motion to approve the service of district, if anybody wants to make that motion. Go on, go on, go on, and move on. All right, get on that one.
If y'all bring in one more than they agree, that's more even to everybody, I would be supportive of it.
All right, we'll move on to the general, that's titled Citizen Time. We've got one person signed up, Citizen Time, Joseph Cabbey. Did I get that wrong?
Yeah. Hello, everyone. I don't know if I'm in the right place, but I've been told by people, the right place to take.
If it's not, we can probably point you to the right one. That's the only guarantee I'm on.
All right. Well, this topic is pesticides. Probably gonna hear a lot more of me and see me because I'm not gonna shut up about this, and I won't change. Last week, my family's life just turned upside down. Man was spraying pesticides in a neighboring field, illegally on our property and spray poisoning across our home, our gardens, my children's toys, their pool, chicken coop, even across the road with my mother-in-law's, where our business is located, and our other gardens, our other chickens. We got nowhere to play at. Three-week-old baby, couldn't bring the baby out. Everything's been covered. It's not just about my family, it's every family in our county. These sprays don't stay neatly on the weeds. They drift, they trespass, they end up on roads, gardens, place spaces, and our food. They harm pollinators, wildlife, and people, contribute to cancer, respiratory illness, and collapsing bee population, which everyone's heard of. Virginia law already recognizes some of these dangers. Virginia Code, Section 3.2, thirty-nine, thirty-nine, subsection B makes it unlawful to use a pesticide in a manner inconsistent with its labeling. The regulations define pesticide drift as movement of chemicals to off-target sites when pesticides move or are directly applied onto land, water, or property where they were never intended. That is misapplication and chemical trespassing, and that is illegal. But here's the gap. While workers on farms are entitled to safety sheets and posting information, neighbors have no right to know anything. Families find out after the chemicals have already been sprayed. Enforcement is weak and accountability is rare. It leaves us all vulnerable. If spraying's gonna continue in Wick County, at the very least, pesticides must be applied only according to the label. Spraying must never cross property lines, and when neighbors are affected, families must have the right to know what was used and to receive the product information and safety data sheet upon request. Across Virginia grassroots, root advocates are also pushing for stronger protections explaining the right-to-know laws, restricting bee-toxic chemicals and the ingredients, noise and adapting integrated pest management that produces reliance on poisons in the first place is a not radical idea, it's common sense. By addressing these gaps locally, Wick County can lead the way in protecting its people and its land. When my children play in the backyard, I should not have the water of the grass beneath them has been poisoned. When I grow my food in the garden, I should not have the fear feeding it to my family. I'm here to ask this county to put people before poison and make sure the next generation inherit land and water that are safe, clean, alive. Thank you. I will add real quickly, if I can. It doesn't cost much to let people know what's being sprayed. It's been seven days since we've been sprayed. Seven days, and you can still smell nothing but pesticide, and nobody wants to tell us what it is. We can go through V-DAX, but there's one guy, one guy from twenty-one counties in southwest Virginia. That's, that's crazy.
Well, I will tell you what, you know, jokingly, if, if we're not in the right place, we can point you in the right place. Virginia's a, a, a dealing with a state which says that this board only has the power that they allow us to have. Earlier, we were talking about creating a transportation district, that's because the code of Virginia gives us that, that authority. As far as pesticides, that is solely on V-DAX, whether we like it, Mr. Barrett corrected me if I'm wrong, whether we like it, we don't like it, we're opposed to it, there's absolutely, we can pass ordinance to not, that says you're not allowed to spray pesticides. It, it's not legal because the code of Virginia doesn't give us that authority. So V-DAX is your point of contact and your state senator and your state bill is, is who you need to talk to on that. So, and Mr. Mayor, I...
I, I wrote down V-DAX number and stuff before you even said V-DAX, but yes, that was...
It, it's one of those things that, you know, we, it's kind of like a pothole out here on number eleven. You know, we can pass a resolution and say, V-DAX, you need to fill that pothole legally if it hasn't been heard. So, yeah. And, and there's probably eighty-five percent of situations that people come to that podium and says, it actually frustrates us and calls. There's nothing we can do. Yeah.
I'm glad you guys heard me.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I, yeah.
And it's, it's kind of, this time of year, and, and with the commercial farmers, and we, we hear this, V-DAX is our best, and the senators are telling us that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the only person we have to close this time, so I'll close Citizen Time. I will move on to payment invoices. Each board member has received, given their pay, a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. So I want to pay a motion to approve the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Barrett, I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions, discussion, or additions to the minutes as provided? All right, all those in favor, six and five, saying aye. Any opposed? So approved. Move on to old business. Mr. Barrett, have you had anything under orders?
I am not aware of anything.
Mr. Hethes? Have a motion by Mr. Barrett, if he has a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions, discussion, or additions to the minutes as provided? All right, all those in favor, six and five, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opponent? So approved. Move on to old business, Mr. Barrett, have you heard anything under orders?
I am not aware of anything.
Mr. Hethes?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to new business. We have the consent calendar that we've all received. I'm going to take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'm going to take that motion.
All right, have a motion by Ms. Lawson, if she has a second. Second by Mr. Kudd. Any discussion on the consent calendar? All right. Here now to the roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we've got our Virginia cooperative extension, this sample. Oh.
Yeah.
I knew you were here, but I didn't see you.
Soon to be Ms. Arnold, too, so change that when that happens.
Listen, you can't change names.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Um, but thank you for allowing me to come to update you on the With County 4H summer programs. Uh, I want to start with that, we did our spring and summer projects this year. Um, we had fifteen youth members sign up across the county for that. They were in charge of maintaining their own mini garden, they were raising chickens, they actually got to eat some of their chickens because they were meat birds. Um, they were caring for rabbits, and then they were watching for wild birds and documenting that, and then they turn it into meat, and then I give them a ribbon based on how they did with their project. We also had a youth ages fourteen to eighteen attend Virginia State Congress at Virginia Tech in June. You may have seen us in the newspaper, we were in there as well, um, because we had two participants compete and won a blue ribbon at the state level. And then we had one participant, Olivia Crigger, who actually won overall champion in her category for animal science. They had the opportunity to attend workshops, All-Star tapping, and an opportunity fair while they were there. And then maybe one of my favorite parts of my job, uh, of course, is With County Junior 4H Grant. We grew in our numbers with a total of a hundred and seventeen with campers, counselors, and adults in attendance for camp. My partner from Carroll County had eighty-four campers, counselors, and adults, giving us a total of two-hundred-and-one that week. To give you an idea, it's two-hundred-and-eighty for capacity, so we're almost there, which is really exciting. We appreciate the With County Schools for the bus transportation that they, um, allowed us to use this year. We also had many local sponsors, like a lot of the Ruritan Clubs in the county, um, the Moose Lodge, and different places like that, that gave us some scholarships. They've actually totaled up twenty-one scholarship recipients for camp this year with half or full scholarships. Um, we are so thankful for those sponsorships, they definitely made camp happen, and we couldn't have it without them. Um, this week is that great opportunity for youth because they get to make new friends, try new opportunities, and learn new skills. This, like I said, might be one of my favorite parts of the summer because of the impact camp can have on a child. And I look forward to next year and hope our numbers will continue to increase. Again, thank you for allowing me to come up at you, and if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and those pictures I gave you are for you to keep.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Barrett?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Doing a great job.
Yeah, I get in the schools next month, so I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the Jim is Mount Rogers Plains District Commission. We have Mr. Barrett, sizeable.
Appreciate the opportunity, um, to give a brief update on the body broadband project. And, uh, without going into too much detail and not going back to any years on this thing, um, it's a project that, uh, was awarded sixty-five million dollars by the state of Virginia. Uh, Mount Rogers was to grant a T on it, um, also making us project manager, point broadband, was a contractor of ISP, um, for this to provide the internet service. Obviously, as you, you probably noticed, multiple different contractors for the installation of those, um, hardware and, and lines and such. So, um, project starts in Washington County. Uh, y'all are on the end of it, you have to build it as you go, so, um, in, in moving, you know, y'all are already last in line, which is obviously not, not good for you, but, um, you have to build, have to build the backstop before you get to the end of it. Most importantly, probably sometime this winter, uh, late winter, we started noticing some, some difficulties, noticed the work slowing down. Up, up until that point, it had been the fastest-moving project in Virginia, and the most passing had been done in at least amount of time, so we're ahead of schedule, everything's running fine. Then, uh, as we do our monthly progress meetings, noticed that, you know, less and less was being submitted in the way of drawdowns, that's being less and less is being built, because they obviously, um, have to have invoices for, for product for us to be able to pay them. Few months of that stall-out, um, goes by, we think maybe there's some trouble, we start to lean on them to figure out why, uh, the slow, this slow period has happened, and, you know, how are we still on time? We're just going to be getting that on time, asking all the normal questions you would ask in this situation. Um, turns out, budgetary issues, there's some match involved with this. Um, they've got an investor group that, that runs the budgetary part of the process. I don't know too much about it, only a few things that I've been told, but, um, they did not get approval early on in the year to be able to continue with this. Not that they weren't planning on still doing it, but they weren't able to get the numbers nailed down with their investors. So, that figures the whole thing out. Um, eventually, after we, they come here, I think, and talk to you all, we had multiple meetings with them, try to figure out, you know, how, how they want to get it done. If so, what's your timetable and, and give us some numbers so we can report back to everybody else. Eventually, about May, um, Joe Fettig calls me with the point. Um, he's been in contact with Donna, with Citizens, and they are the point of the project where they would be overlapping or overbuilding Citizens' lines. And, um, Citizens obviously wants to keep their area, as you can imagine. Um, with the struggle with getting the money, um, they, basically, Joe said, I talked to Donna, and I said, you know, if you think you can get this thing built quicker, similar way, talk to Donna. Talked to Donna, with Citizens, um, worked out basically a, a transfer of money that would allow Citizens to be able to give, give Citizens a go-ahead to build out the rest of the stuff that's not been built out yet, um, and do so quicker, and I'm more time man of what's going on right now, the point. Um, that being said, they also ran it by the D-H-C-D, and, uh, D-H-C-D was okay with it, they came back to me. They said, just all right with you as a project manager, as a, as a grantee. I said, let me check, make sure that Citizens doesn't have some sort of bad reputation in the eastern county. Um, that came back that, that, you know, no one had any complaints about Citizens at that point in time. I said, yes, if you can work it out legally and, and the state is okay with the contract amendments, then I'm fine with doing this change, uh, because I'll get the product built quicker. And then, we're still in the transition phase. Um, I don't, not exactly sure if you saw some of the documents that, uh, were submitted. I have a timeline of our decision-making process, but probably more importantly, there is the information that came from Citizens. And they have prior legislation to proceed, they're working on permitting, they're working on getting contractors in place. And, um, my other big question is, every passing that was promised in the original grant by Point, the citizens would meet that passing. In other words, every citizen they got was on the list to be able to get broadband, and they all want to still get passed, and have to do it to get broadband? The answer was yes, after D-H-C-D checked the polygons and all the other stuff. Um, the answer was yes for that. Uh, I have not yet, I've signed an MOU with Citizens to be able to turn them loose. D-H-C-D is giving prior authorization, which allows them to go ahead and pull up, to build, and, um, I have some contract amendments that I have not yet signed, that's, that's like the final step in this process. So, um, in speaking with Donna, she, she hopes to still, still be able to see this thing built out by the end of November. I will say that just my opinion, and I'm, I'm, I'm dumb on this process, and she knows more about it than I do, it would seem to me that, um, you'll probably see a spring date before the whole thing's finished. Again, just, um, understanding the process of permitting and getting contractors, winter weather, all that. Um, so that's, that's my best estimate I have at this time, and don't, uh, don't let my word be, be more important than Donna's, because she's the one who's, who's over citizens and has a better idea. But, anyway, that's what I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, I've got a good question. I've been dealing with contracts my whole career. Every contractor I ever dealt with, we had an explanation of what was to be accomplished, we had a timeline, we had a bond. Did this company have a bond?
No, I don't think bond was required on this.
And what was the dollar value of this thing?
Sixty-five million dollars, so retained it.
Sixty-five million-dollar contract, and there was no bond required?
Well, retained is how the state does that. So, rather than paying the full amount and certain amounts being held back, ever so on, we've got the project, and so there's a pool of money that states at the end of the project that they don't get if it's not finished.
This, this sounds like the typical stuff that comes out of Washington, with this kind of thing. Uh, this is, this is terrible. I give complaints all the time, you know, why can't I get broadband? And then they came to a certain point, stopped. And I, I've never heard a contract like this before. Other than some of the crap that comes out of Washington. So, I don't quite understand how this is happening.
What was the, what was the original end date? This fall.
It's this, it's November, it's coming November.
So, what are we looking at now?
Well, I said, Donna said just you want to try to get it done by the end of November. I'm telling you, there's a V-DAX process, permitting, that I'm not sure how long it's going to take, so.
And that's my first direction, is, you know, I, I went back and, and what I could find was at least three instances that I shared concerns about this project. And here we are. The, the project manager, Mount Rogers Plains District. You know, I, I've said what I said, I feel like y'all dropped the ball on this. And, you know, it, it's taken this to get them up to that, oh, a sixty-five million-dollar project that takes every citizen with, uh, from agency that we voted. That's, that, that, that's where I'm at. And, and it's going to be delay after delay after delay. And this is, it, it's, you know, when, when it first started, and it started on Miami County, and I will say, no complaints will take more money than County to have the service. They love it. But, you know, we had complaints, 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 because us, it's not our problem. And, you know, I felt like we entrusted this project to our partners at Mount Rogers Plains District, and then we give this.
Mr. Barrett, did I understand you correct you all of the issues three different times to the Plains District?
At, at least three issues that I, I did through a deep dive, one like three miles. And it's been more than one.
I want to make sure I understood that correctly. So, how did we go from someone bringing up three issues to being here? I mean, it sounds like there's some warning out there, but they ignored? Did consumers be brought up because the project was falling off things?
No, it was not ignored.
It was over here.
Well, we, we increased our monitoring and our questioning at the same time. You know, I mean, what, I don't, I don't know how else to say it, but when you get in a situation normally in a, in a state or this is federal, federal, when you say contract, what you do is you stop paying the bills. And that gets the attention of the contractor. This is, the contractor stopped submitting the bills. So, normally what we're able to do is say, you guys aren't holding your end deal up, you know, your, your, your timeline completion is off. Therefore, I'm going to pay you a dollar. Well, stop requesting the money. So, our leverage in that situation is to not pay the money. Also, the next leverage that we have is we say, we want to remove you from this contract, and we want to have someone else come in and try to finish filling out the contract. At the end of the day, you know, our, our job above and beyond everything is to make sure that the whole thing is built, and everybody's supposed to get the service, gets the service, so. Not, not that it's not a problem where we were at, but, but the fact that Point and Citizens worked this out to be able to make sure that the final benefit was achieved, that's what we would have done anyway. We'd stop work, stop paying, if they stopped work, they stopped paying. We would have consulted another ISP, tried to work it out legally with D-H-C-D to be able to allow the transition to happen, but all, all that was done.
So, what kind of permitting process is now the simple deal being done, and are we dealing with, uh, revenue?
So, two railroad crossings that were already approved, um, both that we transferred from Point into Citizens, and then, uh, so, yeah, V-DAX, um, the only difference here in, in the project is going to be that Citizens runs underground and Point was usually hanging, hanging the area, so. There's a permitting process, obviously, to get. Well, you see them go on the sides of the road, just chucking trees in the ground, and blow, blow it through. So, they got, they got to get the permitting to be able to do that part of the process.
Mr. Barrett, I do believe we have represented the Trump citizens here, if you'd like to talk to them. Think that's a good one.
That's fine, but I'll be honest with you, unless you come up here and give me a, a definite drop dead date when this is going to be done, I don't know if you want to speak. So, I, I take that you can't give me a drop dead date.
No, at this point, um, as he said, we're working on permitting. Uh, we have, um, permitted close to twenty miles. Um, right now, we're looking at about an estimate of, of about a hundred miles, um, to get all the public roads built, um, that, that remain, um, the capital gap there, um, for, for the people that don't have it, the residents don't have it. Um, I did receive some permitting back today, um, and, uh, that's a good sign. Uh, right now, V-DAX as well as, in this area as well as across Virginia, the type of broadband projects are overwhelmed with permitting. But, uh, to, to this district's credit, they are working with us and trying to get those permits going so we can get things moving, um, here in the next two to three weeks, to get, uh, get some of these facilities in the ground and get some people hooked up. Um, we did plan to, as we move out, hook people up as we go along, so that people can see progress and get, uh, get service to if people are not served right now. Um, and, like I said, we are, um, just, just to get it started as soon as we can and to make, um, make things happen. But there are circumstances a little bit beyond our control and permitting that, you know, makes it tough to give a government date on this thing.
As a representative in the eastern end of the county, the lead lines of the district, I've been taking this information, we've been getting from Point Broadband for several years now, to give it to my citizens. And so now, citizens eventually say that I'm a liar, because I've taken what I've been given. And, and now, they were supposed to be getting Point Broadband, and they also have citizens in the area, and they also have Central Link, Brightspeed, another, you know, and everything. Depending on who I talk to, they are unhappy with both, now with them, back to citizens. Uh, now they don't believe me, believe what I say when I hear what you tell me that we may be at the end of November, probably early spring, and they suggest we've been saying that forever. Uh, so it puts us as elected officials in a bind, when we take what we're given, and, and we want to believe what you're saying, and then we take it and give it to our citizens. Or at the end of the day, uh, they're, we're all working for, because they're paying tax dollars to get this done. And, and so, now, I've been told that there is a price difference between Point Broadband and what citizens is going to provide. That now there may not be a competitor, that it will be just citizens in areas versus it was going to be citizens and maybe Point Broadband, or citizens and, or the other one in, in Point Broadband. So, I am definitely concerned with the quality that the residents will be receiving from this versus in the western end of the county, that may have Point Broadband and the other two, or the other one. Uh, and, and so, it is concerning to me, and, and so, I mean, thank you.
Sure, does anybody else have anything to, Mr. Sizeable?
I'll just say it has been aggravation, but I really do feel good that we are back on track, and I appreciate everything we are doing, and citizens as well, because, um... And citizens as well, because, um, even if it is spring, at least we're back on track and our citizens are going to be covered. You know, or their areas, all the areas are going to be covered again, so. I was getting nervous there for a while, so I appreciate them and, um, everything kind of moving forward, so thank you all.
Where does the county believe we fall for this here? Who's accountable for us being here at this point? It's not a hard question.
No, it is, yeah, and you know, it's not a hard question. It's not a hard question. It's, uh, trying to be, trying to be careful of our, with our partners, that's all, but, um, so basically, you know, when, when we stopped, it started the whole thing. That's, that's what started. Um, and, uh, the question of, of, of information is the difficulty of if you don't have information, you don't know what to say or what, or what information to give. And if you don't have our deadlines, you're just, you know, just making stuff up. So being a little bit, you know, reluctant to, to say anything about it, just because I didn't know what the outcome was going to be. Probably, I mean, for anything to apologize for, I, I think that I should have been more careful to at least keep you apprised of where I was at, even though I didn't have the answers, and at least say I'm working on it, that's, that's about the best I, I could have done. Um, and, you know, when it comes right down to it, I don't want to play the big and small scenario, but let's say you get to the place where the thing's not going to be built, and you go into some legal action about this contract not being fulfilled. If you look at the contract, what ends up being held over their head is going to be retainage. The retainage, um, Point already said, we'll give all the retainage to citizens, let them build it. We don't, we don't need to do this to have the coverage, we don't need to do this to have the money. When you have, when you have a contractor that's willing to walk away from seven point five million dollars, you lose your leverage. However, in this case, we're our citizens to be able to build it. I think we've come out with the best scenario when we have the answer.
It's still a positive outcome.
I hope so.
I mean, it's hard out here, but it's still, I mean, it's, we're still providing, I mean, we, there's still is provided service that our citizens in the county need, and there's still one for it.
And, and I think my question is, what's the repercussions from, from Point since they didn't fulfill what they brought me able to do?
Right, and the repercussions, they don't, they'll be the last of their money.
Because they get the money that they put in, which I assume there is not a nonprofit, they're not breaking even.
That's right.
So they're gaining multiple new customers, and, you know, it's, to me, if they're making that like payment.
That's why I was hoping the county would pay.
You know, that, that's just, you know, they, they basically took their ball and went home and left all the other kids on the basketball court. Scrum two for nuts, I, you know. That, that's the, that's the piece that, that bothered me. Uh, and, and this has been going on for some time, and we didn't hear about it until it was, it was a severe. Anyway, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Sizemore?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Seize, thank you.
I haven't come back at your place, so I wish I asked you to come back any other day.
All right, next item on the agenda is the personal property tax relief resolution, Mr. Bear.
Now, Mr. Linkes has provided this to us, and I would request you all approve the tax relief this year, and now twenty-eight point five four percent is shown in resolution, twenty-five thirty-five.
Is it twenty-five thirty-five or twenty-five thirty-four?
Uh.
On the agenda?
Oh. Thirty-five on the document. If you approve, you pick me to our resolution, and then we'll make certain to correct.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to approve it, but.
It should be thirty-five.
Is it thirty-five?
Yeah.
I'll, entertain a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five or something. Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second, have a second by Mr. Burden, please, you should.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions or discussion? Well, I'll be my annual, uh, rant about, I thought we were doing lady caller taxes many, many governors ago, yet here we are. Anybody else have anything? All right, here another new roll call vote, Mr. Bear.
Uh.
Uh, 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 so approved. I apologize, but I, I had to do this in the last half, I still can't. All right, next we've got the Barrett Mill loan resolution, Mr. Bear, how so would you?
Uh, yes, we, uh, been, uh, working with, uh, rural development on, uh, the Kinnon documents for the closing of our loan on, uh, Barrett Mill, and we need to adopt this room loan resolution so Mr. Lawrence can get it into them. This is the rest of the money, the three million five hundred and seventy-six thousand and zero dollars. Uh, as you all know, we have interim financing to get this carried through, we won't actually close on everything until the project is completed. Um, if you drive up Blackberry Drive, there's quite a bit of construction on Blackberry Drive already. Um, I'm not certain how much is on Barrett Mill to start the process, but, uh, the Blackberry Drive part of the contract isn't moving on.
All right, entertain a motion to approve that resolution, so I have a motion by Mr. Moore to have a second, so Mr. Cook. I'm surprised Mr. Cook didn't make the motion, he's a little slow. How slow today? Any questions or discussion? All right, here another new roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Uh. Uh, 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 so approved.
Next, we've got a performance agreement for Mount Rogers Community Services, Mr. Bear.
Yes.
This is an annual thing.
They sent that to us, uh, requesting, uh, uh, the board's approval, and if the board does not approve, it just, uh, no more. Uh, we would need the contract approval before we signed the contract. Uh, they requested any questions or comments by September twelfth, we could have them come to a meeting if you all have any questions and want them to go over it. Um, so your, your choices are to take action, accept their, uh, performance contract, um, or just let it, uh, ride, however you all like to proceed. Or if you'd like for them to come to a meeting. And it's, it's a name, or I think every other year we get this from.
It's a name, okay. All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the performance agreement.
Same.
Have a motion by Miss Lawson to have a second, have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, here another new roll call vote, Mr. Bear.
Uh.
Uh, 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 so approved. Anything else on your new business?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to staff reports, Deputy Kelly Minister, Mr. Fink.
Thank this chairman, members of the boards, you do not have a written report from me in the, uh, in the package.
Which can be good, can be bad.
Let's make it all good tonight, how about that? Uh, Mr. Bear forced me to take a few days of vacation, so, uh, I did not have a written report, uh, prepared for you. Uh, however, while I was gone on vacation, I'm pleased to report that the, uh, accountant for the Regional Improvement Commission delivered a check for nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and change, uh, from the, uh, Regional Improvement Commission, uh, that covers approximately one-third of our public safety, uh, budget for fire and EMS. Uh, so, uh, grateful for that, it's a ones-a-year dispersment. Uh, we budgeted seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, so it was significantly above, uh, what we had budgeted, uh, for this year. So glad to have that, and, um, I'll get the documentation that you already approved to the, uh, the commission for that records. While I'm talking about public safety, I would like to ask, uh, Chief, uh, Pardell and Chief Fraser, uh, to come up, but we do have a new staff member I'd like to, to have them introduce, and then I have a couple of other, uh, announcements after that introduction.
Father, welcome up here, okay, come on with. I feel bad when I miss a meeting because I'm on vacation, but if it was a check that made, I've been mistaking for my time.
I, I tried to have them wait until this week to, to hand the check off to me personally, but I thought handing to Kelly Woods was, was probably just as good.
Good afternoon, uh, I'll already do it better than I did the last time, that's the, the photo. Um, emergency services continues to grow. Most recently with the addition of an emergency, or an education coordinator, uh, we were blessed to have lots of good applicants. Um, we've onboarded Dr. James Mitchell, he comes to us from teaching at the college level, and he brings about twenty years of EMS education experience. Excuse me, I do believe that, uh, he will become an integral part of our program. I think that, uh, we've onboarded good people across the boards, and I think this is the next logical step in that we educate them. We teach them our ways, we teach them new ways, we teach them, we teach them, right? So with that, Dr. James Mitchell.
Well, thank you guys, I just wanted to say thank you to the board, uh, for letting me work this position first and foremost. But I think too at the same time for seeing the, seeing the need for it, like the foresight into it. And it really shows, uh, the dedication that you guys have as the board, uh, to put into the agency. So I'm excited for the opportunity, excited for what the future has, and look forward to, again, to know everybody as far as on the EMS side, and then, uh, not only just working with EMS, but the fire departments, and of course even the community, so I'm looking forward to all that, very excited, and again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Welcome. Hey Chuck, who are you sitting with? Um, and then, nobody, I had this on my list to talk to supervisors down, since Chuck's up here, who can help me out. Um, I had the opportunity to attend a training last week at WCC, and it was alert active shooter training, and it was a, a cross between law enforcement and fire and EMS. And Chuck, Ray, Lindsey, Randy, Lieutenant Wymer, we had Cody. And we had, so on the county side, we had a bunch of fire and EMS people, and the town with you have a few people with. Uh, part of this is talking about red zones, warm zones, green zones, whatever, and it was, you know, to extricate patients here in a type of scenario. And so we're doing this and, and it was, I felt sorry for them because they, they, they had to play the victims all the time. Every now and then they gave me a, a gun and I didn't have to do that, but we were talking and our people won't have any realistic bills. And I just had to look at Chuck and go, hey, y'all, y'all have like a vest for anything like this, things like that, for, can, and I know there's grant programs out there, and I'm not sure if the plans, I can't see them, because. Uh, I, I know there's, there's grant programs out there for law enforcement, I assume that extends to EMS. Um, so can we look at? I think else?
We already are.
Okay, it was, and it was just one of those things that, you know, just popped in the head because, you know, we got the best, but they don't, they've been seen with fire, going in that type of situation. But I will say that, that, that all our people and, and with those people, I mean, done a great job. And, you know, it's, uh, it, it was really impressive, um, to actually get to see, uh, I wouldn't give Chuck a gun, but, you know, I'd give him stethoscope.
I was up to college at another meeting, VIA, Mount Rogers Regional Partnership, and, uh, I, I do look out for our people. I, I know it was a training drill, but I saw Chuck actually running into a building, I didn't check and make sure he recovered, like, from running into the building.
And, and I can say, if you don't believe it was realistic, but we made TikTok. There was a lady that came through during the old training exercises and about took off running, because that's how realistic it is, and, um, but Chuck, thank you, we repeat, we all done a great job, um, so we appreciate the opportunity, we really did. So, and I've been already talking to Sheriff Klein about it, and we're just going to continue that training, so appreciate it. And, and it's one of those things, you know, it's like I've got a smokescreen in the house, and I pray that every winter I don't have to use it. Or my wife would have to use it, but, I know. It, it's one of those things I'd really have it and not believe it and not have it made, so thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys. I'm going to look for it, sir.
How's your wife, does she sleep?
I got the one grab. I'm sorry, man, I'm going to keep, you give it to me, yeah.
Um, I, I do, Mr. Chairman, uh, Doc Mitchell, of course, has been here before as a pastor behind your church, has, has prayed for you to, to start a meeting. Uh, so it's, it's good to see him here in a, a different context and look forward to working with him. Uh, we do have two additional hires that are going to start, uh, in the next week. We have, uh, one who's starting tomorrow, uh, her name is Alicia Sides, uh, she is the new recreation director. Uh, comes to us, uh, with a strong, uh, background in programs and, uh, some in athletics, and looking forward to, to getting her up and running. Uh, and, uh, introduced to the staff and, uh, to the, the folks that help make recreation work here in Wood County. Then next week, uh, we'll also, uh, bring on Melissa Parsons, because Parsons is the new, um, assistant to the deputy county administrator for nine-one-one. Uh, she is, uh, going to be working with us overseeing the nine-one-one department. Uh, very excited about this hire, uh, is the, uh, trainer for, uh, the academy in Bristol, uh, so she teaches the, uh, dispatcher certifications there. Has very deep contacts with dispatchers throughout Southwest Virginia. Um, has, uh, also been the region six VDM coordinator for, uh, nine-one-one centers, and was the region four, uh, director for, um, dispatch, uh, for the state police, uh, here in Woodville. So very strong credentials, looking very much forward to seeing what she can do, uh, with our, uh, nine-one-one center, and, uh, especially recruitment, uh, for additional dispatchers.
So my name and thanks, Mr. Travers. I, I will just say, I, I know Ms. Parsons, uh, from my day job, she is an absolute rock star when it comes to, emergency dispatching on top of her experience with the software kind of, so.
And, and I can say this now, uh, that, that we've announced her hire, um, uh, her, her most recent posting is, as the lead trainer for Southern Software, which is the cap provider that we've selected, that we move it to for our dispatchers to use to dispatch calls, uh, starting early next year. So, uh, having somebody with that depth of, of knowledge and that ability to train our folks should get us up and running on the new cash system very quickly.
When did you say she started?
Uh, she's gonna, uh, initially come in next Tuesday, she'll really get going with us September fifteenth. Uh, she had to, had to give her notice with her current employer, and, um, we, we want to be gracious to them, um, to go through this process as well.
All right, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Travers? All right, we're going to county administrator, Mr. Bear.
Yeah, first two items were actually things I stole from Mr. Hankett while he was on vacation, uh, but Allison Williams, first one was the VSAT grants, you got approval for the grant. Uh, request your office approval, Ms. Woods has confirmed it's not in the current budget, so request your office approval of budget, and then amend and appropriate that amount, seven hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
All right, y'all heard the request, I'm going to have a motion to approve and amend and appropriate. Somebody have a motion for Mr. Terry to have a second, have a second for Mr. Moore. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All right, here another new roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Uh, 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 so approved.
And then there's a second memo, uh, from her as well, for a VSAT, in, uh, next generation nine-one-one additional funding grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Ms. Woods has indicated it also needs to be amended and appropriated, so request approval on amendment thirty-five oh six four five seven seven zero three.
Once again, you heard the request, I'll have a motion, have a motion by Mr. Cook to have a second, I have a second by Mr. Burden. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, here another new roll call vote, Mr. Bear.
Uh, 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 so approved.
Mr. Chairman, now, Mr. Bear, if you don't mind, I would point out on that first one, the, the larger one, we are acting as fiscal agent for, uh, multi-county project, it's one that you approved earlier this year. So we're going to be getting paid requests from other counties, we'll be paying them, and we'll be requesting reimbursement from the state. So you, you may see some unusual payments to the localities. So you, you may see some unusual payments to the localities as a result of this, but we should be reimbursed for the full amount.
Well, let's do like the Commonwealth and hold it back thirty days and gang it within.
More with you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Barrick. Yeah. Next is opioid participation agreement for Sandoz and leading to the correct, well, I would request authorization for staff and North County Attorney to assign all, uh, forms as needed.
All right. Again, you heard the request. I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Burden to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. Here another new roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Uh, 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 uh.
So approved.
And, uh, the last, uh, action item I've got there is one Mr. Morton will make a quick motion on to approve. It's basically N R C S has approved the emergency watershed protection program for the streams along dry run in Speedwell. Uh, their total budget for this is one million, three hundred and eighty seven thousand, two hundred and eighty one. Uh, this is the, the statement of work. We do have to do a lot of the work on it. We'll have to work with the engineering firms and the contractors and all that to get it done. There are some potential ineligible costs. We'll try to make certain that we don't run into any of those in the process. But basically it's one point three eight seven two eighty one without any local match, uh, which is primarily aimed at dry road, uh, dry run in Speedwell and a couple of other areas over.
Have a motion by Mr. Morton to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. Here another new roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Uh, 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 uh.
So approved.
All the ice items, sir.
All right. Mr. Parnell is not here. Can't hear Terry. Anything else under staff reports?
I am not aware of anything else, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We'll go over board reports, we just do water committee, Mr. Burden.
Under water committee, that, I'm obviously my thing, we're going to provide and make the following recommendations. Number one, providing a ninety day waiver on residential connection fees for the Barrett Mill Water Project.
All right. Committee does leave a second. Are there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? What does the purpose of that?
That is basically, we charge fifteen hundred dollars for connection. So this is for the residents that we're going by then, when, when we advise them of this. If they sign up within that first ninety days, we do not charge them. You all are waiting them having to pay that, uh, connection fee. So it's encouraging them to connect to the water at no cost.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Here another new roll call vote, Mr. Burden.
Uh, 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 uh.
So approved. Second item is amending and appropriating three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars for the Travis Stock Lift Station Project. Again, committee does leave a second. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right. Hear no, Mr. Terry?
Uh, 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 uh.
So approved. And that was all in order. I think you're done. All right. We move on to board time, Mr. Terry.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Morton, at this time. Mr. Cook, at this time. Ms. Lawson.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Burden. And if you say nothing this time, I will call Jamie.
No, I actually didn't have something. I just want to pull the record. You ordered Merkin's law. I want to say that I am very confident in putting the weight of government on my residents.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Uh, I, I covered the one thing I wanted to say about, uh, Mr. Parnell and his crew. Um, the next thing is, uh, and Mr. Smith's not here. So, uh, I wore, wore my bird trip tie because I thought we had a chisel, a bird trip to go and get this resolution. Apparently, um, he, he didn't make it, so just to get it on the record that, uh, me and Mr. Smith have a standing tradition of betting on the bird trip for chisel game. And I'll just be floating that out there and the next meeting, Jamie will be wearing this bird trip watch tie. Because, uh, I, I got to thinking when I was getting dressed to see if Jamie's will receive more than I have. So, you know, but high school football season is upon us. Um, all the kids are back in school, uh, drive safe, watch out for school buses. And I hope they have a good year. It's, uh, I, I did, I did attend convocation, the convocation session, um, earlier in the month and, uh, I, I went up there and I had multiple teachers stop and, and thanked me for the additional money we gave with county schools for their pay raises. And I had some that were kind of upset because they were planning on retiring and now they're on the work. Uh, which, you know, I, I told them that's just how the U R S works, but, um, what that told me was that we done the right thing because it allowed us to keep some of our experienced teachers in a latent pool. That is, I mean, it's like they're shark tank trying to hurt somebody, especially in education. But anyway, that's all I've got. And Mr. Barrick, what they, did we say for recess?
It did not work great for everybody, but six of seven of you said Wednesday, the third would be correct. So, uh, I put five thirty in my email. I don't know if that works out for you all or not. That's.
All right. Entertaining a motion to recess until sixteen thirty, twenty twenty five, and seventeen thirty, or five thirty.
Seven, seven.
Have a motion, I didn't tell you. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burden, all those papers, six topics they got. Uh, any of both will now be in recess.